Hello Kathy.
Good evening.
Hey Kathy.
How are you doing?
Doing good here.
So David, what's the vegetable of choice this year in your garden?
If you don't like tomatoes, don't come over.
That's all I have in our garden.
We have 118 tomato plants.
Geez.
Thirty-two squash. About little thirty-four okra. About thirty-two pepper plants.
Who's gonna harvest all that?
Yeah, I'd love to help her, but I'm pretty tired lately, you know what I mean?
Harold is trying to get qualified as a farm so he can take advantage of all the tax deductions.
You're gonna be a homesteader, Huffman, is that what it is?
Oh, foul for crop damage with all this rain.
That's true too. Crop insurance is pretty hard to get now though unfortunately.
Alright, it looks like I think we've got everyone. Any technical issues that we're waiting on? Get folks to bring on their videos. Just reminder that we will call for a simplified roll and we ask that you unmute, give it a second, and then verbally confirm that you're here. Looks like the live stream is up. So we'll get rolling in just a moment. Alright, here we go. Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of Burlington City Council. Today is June 16th, 2020. Appreciate everyone joining us. Due to coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is being held via the Zoom platform as posted on the City of Burlington's website. The meeting is streaming live on the City of Burlington's YouTube channel and page at youtube.com/COBNC. Please note the meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical connection difficulties, please contact our Public Information Specialist John Vernon at 36513-5440 for support. He'll be available throughout the meeting, including during our public hearings and public comment sessions. For tonight's public comments, attendees who wish to address the council can indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature within the Zoom platform or by pressing star nine if you're joining us by phone. And you'll be called on at your designated time to speak depending on if you're here for a public hearing or public comment. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Balchoudas and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Mayor Protem Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith. I think you're on mute.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly. Finance Director Peggy Reese. Water Resources Director Bob Patterson.
Here.
Economic Director Peter Bishop.
Here.
Recreation Supervisor and Special Events Emily Crowley. Emily. Emily, are you off mute? Alright, I see her joining us. Let her fix her sound. Public Information Specialist John Vernon.
Here.
Alright.
Here.
There we go, thank you. Alright, for tonight's invocation. Bob Ward.
Hey, let us pray. As we convene tonight, we come to you with our country facing health, economic and moral crises.
Yes.
We acknowledge that through you, all things are possible. Do I need to wait?
No, go ahead Bob, I think it's just a delay in the connection.
Okay, well I'm sorry, I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll start over if that's okay. Let us pray, as we convene tonight, we come to you with our country facing health, economic and moral crises. We acknowledge that through you, all things are possible and we now ask for your divine guidance as we continue to move through these difficult and trying times. Please help us to listen better, to care more, to put ourselves in others' shoes. Help us to bring positive growth out of these hard times for the benefit of all of our citizens. Help us to grow back, not to what was, but instead to what we can become. We ask that our leaders with your guidance seek ways to heal the sick, protect our healthcare workers, protect all the other workers who have provided for us during these unprecedented times, provide for the needs of economically stressed and have the moral courage to promote racial equity. We pray that those in leadership positions be given the ability to govern according to your will and may we as a people unite under your banner of truth to support and encourage each other as we face these crises together as one nation. We ask for the resolve to care for one another as members of a worldwide human family and that we learn anew what it means for us to do together what no one of us can do alone. We ask for these signs in your name, amen.
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 Councilmember Ward. We have a special presentation this evening for the Link Transit 2020 Safety Award. This time I'd like to call on Executive Director David Ruh.
Good evening everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council and distinguished guests, members of your leadership team. It's my honor and pleasure to represent the North Carolina Public Transit Association this evening for a brief presentation before you. We certainly appreciate your leadership and guidance for your community. Our association is comprised of 90 system members and 50 business partners across North Carolina and we are honored tonight to represent the association as Executive Director to recognize Link Transit. Recently, they received a safety award for their fixed route. You can see the plaque in front of you. Normally ladies and gentlemen, we would have presented this to them last week during our scheduled conference in Concord, but we had to forego that event based on the COVID-19. But I really appreciate the leadership of Mike None and his team, not only for the safety award, but also their ongoing support as we go through COVID-19 is a critical service for your community. And we stand ready to be a partner with you in the association as we move forward, not only with COVID-19, but the economic comeback that we anticipate going forward. So on behalf of the North Carolina Transit Association, my pleasure to congratulate Mike and his team for a job well done. Safety is our number one priority and certainly through the COVID-19 experience, we all recognize the value and importance of safety. So again, we're grateful and we appreciate very much the work that's happening over in Burlington. Thank you so much.
Thank you Director Ruh, we appreciate that recognition and thank you for joining us this evening.
My pleasure.
Alright, next on our agenda, we recognize our interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Good evening Mayor and council members. It is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
No. Alright, before council is the agenda, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved Mayor.
Second.
Alright, motion to adopt agenda proposed by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand to indicate a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is approved unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A to approve the annual agreement for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 between the City of Burlington and Witsit Fire Department, Inc. For first responder fire protection and emergency medical technician services effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2020. Need to approve budget amendment 2020-32 for all funds as of fiscal year ending in June 30th, 2020. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye and raise your hand. Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes and councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Next, we have a number of public hearings on our agenda this evening. If anyone in attendance would like to speak during these public hearings, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom and if joining us by phone using the star nine to notify your host that you wish to speak. We will recognize you at the appropriate time to speak. And if you have any technical difficulties, again, John Vernon is standing by at 336513-5440 to assist you or to take your comment for it to be read into the record. Again, we have two public hearings this evening, so please specify which one of those you wish to join us at. I will call for public comments for each one individually. Alright, item one, public hearing has been set to consider adopting a resolution in order to permanently close Shady Lawn Court. And this time I'd like to recognize City Engineer Todd Lambert.
Welcome. Mayor, council. I'm gonna share my screen to go over this request with you.
Give it just a moment for that screen to come up.
So hopefully everyone can see the screen.
Looks like it's up, but I don't have, there we go, we've got an image coming through now.
So this is just a brief overview. Hope Church has requested the city abandon the public right of way of Shady Lawn Court. Now I'll remind you that council adopted a resolution of intent to abandon the right of way on May 5th at your council meeting then. Now that set the public hearing for tonight to consider this for permanent abandonment. Shady Lawn Court in relationship is just northwest of downtown. adjacent to Hillcrest Elementary School. Let me zoom in a little bit closer and kind of give you a little bit of detail. So this is actually a right of way that was platted many years ago that was never officially open, nothing built in it for a public street. The portion that's been requested to be closed is that portion directly adjacent behind the church. The church owns all the parcels surrounding the property, there are no public utilities in the right of way. And so they just kind of requested this to clean up their property and kind of close it out to be more functioning as their own. Engineering has no objections and actually recommends this closure. This was advertised in the paper and we did install two signs at the property that is required by general statutes. We did receive one phone call in engineering based on the advertised signage. They just were questioning what was being closed and what was going on. When we explained it to them, they had no further questions or no objections and we did not receive any other phone calls or inquiries about it. It's fairly straightforward as far as engineering is concerned, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if you have them at this time.
Thank you Todd. Any questions from council before we begin the public hearing?
No.
Okay. Alright, this is a public hearing, at this time we'll open the public hearing and allow public comments. We ask that if you do choose to comment, you state your name and address for the record. So this time we'll begin that public hearing. Then you can use the raise hand feature within Zoom or star nine if you're joining us by phone. We'll take just a moment to check all of our lines for comments. Again, it's public comment for item one under our public hearings. The consideration of resolution in order to permanently close Shady Lawn Court. Alright, it looks like no indication for comments via phone or Zoom. So at this time I'll call for a motion to close public hearing.
Mayor, I'm moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Alright, motion to close public hearing made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes and councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. This time the public hearing for item one is now closed. Do I hear any council questions or motion regarding this item?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we adopt the resolution in order to permanently close Shady Lawn Court as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilmember Butler to close Shady Lawn Court as recommended by staff, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to close Shady Lawn Court? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. So on our agenda, we have item number two, public hearing has been set to consider adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget and the adoption of the community development budget. This time I'd like to recognize City Manager Harden Watkins. And I believe Harden's got his screen shared with a budget presentation, so folks should be able to see that now. Harden, I think you're on mute.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. I will go through the slides, these slides should look familiar to council members and those who watched the June first work session, very similar slides, I have made a few updates updating the changes that have been made since June 1st and I will note those changes as we go along and then I can also do a recap at the very end of the things that have changed since June 1st. So and I'm gonna skip through some of the slides unless somebody has a question for sake of time since this presentation has been received once before. So real quickly for an overview of the budget, this year, the proposed general fund budget is the second line you see here. Fifty-nine million zero fifty-three one seventy-seven. That represents a $243,000 decrease since last, from last year's budget. That's about a point four one percent, point four one of one percent decrease, which as you know is very unusual, the city would adopt the budget less than the previous year. The highlights of that, no property tax increase. Sanitation fee increases proposed for January 1 of 21 and June 1 of 21 divided up into two parts and I can provide a few more details on that in a moment. And we've also recommended fire inspection fees to begin January 1 of 2021. The proposed water sewer budget is 31,187, as you know, that operates as a separate fund here. That's about a 1.9% increase over last year's number and that represents about a $568,000 increase primarily, as mentioned before, due to insurance, retirement, payroll costs and capital needs. So that's the quick overview, let me walk through our challenges and I'm just gonna go through this quickly because the challenges are the same as what we talked about two weeks ago. We anticipate a severe decline in sales tax revenue, we anticipate a lower property tax collection rate. We think our utility bill collections are gonna be down due to the state restriction on shut offs. Unfortunately for us, that also impacts our stormwater fees and sanitation fees since those are collected on with utility bills. So we'll see some impact on those, we believe those are cash flow issues. We'll eventually collect the money, all except for late fees which will not be allowed to be collected. But we will collect most of those funds at some point in time. We'll see a delay in vehicle tax collection, there's a five-month extension on vehicle registrations at the state. And we also will see a loss of recreation programs and the rental fees that go with our recreation programs. Our next group of challenges, so what we did to try to react to this and council members, you're familiar with this, we've had multiple conversations about this. We immediately realized the impact of COVID as it hit the community in March, made immediate efforts to limit our spending, we implemented a budget freeze 40 days earlier than we normally do in a fiscal year. We've frozen 26 positions and those were frozen in March and will remain frozen unless we bring those back to you through June 30th of 2021, so over a year. That's 17 full-time positions, nine part-time positions. We see a natural, what we call a natural furlough in parts of recreation. Our part-time staff are obviously not working and not providing the programming, they're not working, so they're not being paid. So we have some natural furloughs of a number of part-time folks. We have halted most of our capital projects that weren't yet started. We have no non-essential staff travel is no longer allowed outside of Alamance and Guilford County without permission from the city manager or assistant city manager. We've also delayed purchase of a newly proposed fire truck, fire truck number six. Next group of challenges, so how do we handle that? So sort of the things that we were faced with as we started this process early in 2020 was how to balance without a property tax rate increase. We've got some unprecedented conditions which we're all facing and struggling with and thinking about every day related around to what COVID-19 has done to our economic patterns and our social patterns. So there's lots of economic and revenue uncertainty in all the categories I mentioned a moment ago. And then we constantly, as you know, have personnel expenses with primarily health insurance that is difficult every year to pay the increases that come with that. We also have regular pay increases for our employees. We also have a retirement system and as you know, the state treasurer has a mandated increase each year to participate in that retirement system. So those are challenges that we are definitely facing. The next set of challenges was how do we maintain our city facilities and infrastructure? As you know, with those assets, they are constantly in need of attention and we get to stay on top of that, we always keep that at the forefront of our mind as we go through this process. We have an aging fleet and we have some big ticket equipment items that need to be replaced. And then even pre-COVID, we always know that our sales tax growth, which is our largest, our growing, typically our growing revenue source is very unpredictable this year based on consumer spending patterns and it's always something that we're worried about. But this year it's all been to social, I mean, consumer spending patterns. So let me talk for a moment about the proposed sanitation fee increase, which would go into effect of January 2021. Trying to push that back, hopeful there'll be some financial and economic recovery by that point in time. That allows for a 50% recapture of our solid waste costs. A recycling program, as you know, currently has about 100%, has 100% recapture. It helps us offset a 5% landfill tipping fee increase at Alamance County's instituting next year. It adjusts for growth in additional services. The last increase we had was in 2008 and obviously our services have expanded and grown. We try to, we try to offer things as people need them. So one of the good components of this proposal this year is it will eliminate the bulk waste collection fees. All bulk waste now will be collected at no additional charge all year. So that is indeed a service enhancement for our residents. The recommended monthly increase is $3.36, that will be phased in. Half of that coming in January 1 and the other half coming June 1. The fiscal year impact for this year would be a net gain of $167,000 for the city. And we believe next year for a full year, that would probably be closer to $500,000. And just, so you know, that's an 11, 3.36 divides out to 11 cents per day for our users. So let me talk about our proposed fire inspection fee, it's also included in this budget proposal that would go into effect January of 2021 as well, trying to delay and let some of our economic recovery happen before. That would be proposed, a new fee, $69 to $319 per inspection depending on the size of the business and the frequency of the inspection. That's delayed implementation until January 1 of 2021. We think that would generate $135,000 for those six months of the next fiscal year. This is a revenue offset of some planned changes to our fire department hourly pay structure as we change our hourly structure from 2,912 hours a year to 2756 and it's some complicated ways that we handle our payroll systems, but that's been requested by our fire department leadership team following PTRC study that we completed about a year ago. And this is one of the things we need to do to get our pay situation in better shape for fire. So let me share a few, this is some new information on this slide, let me share a little bit of information with council. Most of our businesses, 75% of the businesses estimated by the fire department would only pay this every three years, so they're on a three-year cycle. We do a fire inspection once every three years for certain types of businesses. So many businesses would only see this again once every three years. Any restaurant that's under 2,500 square feet, their fee would be the $69 amount and that would be once per year. Our big box retailers, Walmart, Home Depot, et cetera, they would pay $319 again once every three years when they're inspected. This concept started growing and becoming more popular in North Carolina about 10 years ago. Has not been implemented in Burlington to date. We, from the folks we have talked with, our proposed fees are on the low end of the spectrum across the state and again, just a reminder, we would not collect any of these fees until January and then obviously a large number of folks would only pay this once every three years. Let me move forward now and talk about our major personnel impacts and council's familiar with this, there are four new positions. Police Evidence Technician, Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer and Transportation Planner. You've heard the details on those in the past, there's one reclassified position in the IT department. And then we have a grade change proposed in public works that missed, just got missed in the shuffle as we discussed this with you back in June. We don't feel like this will have a budgetary impact, but just cleans up something that got missed actually in two PTR, not last year, not this current year's PTRC study, but the one before and it just never got incorporated, so we believe that'll be not a financial impact, but we need you to officially approve that grade level change. And if council familiar, as our BDC Burlington Downtown Corporation operations changes, downtown manager will move from BDC and come over to the City of Burlington. So that needs to be formally created and then we have established a contractual arrangement which council has approved in previous months with City of Graham. We're four new telecommunications, that's a 100% revenue offset, so every dollar that's spent on that is reimbursed by City of Graham, a written contract. So that is, those are our major personnel impacts. Let me talk a little bit more about the general fund, these are just the departments, we've gone over that before, so I'll skip along here. The highlights of the general fund, again, the proposed budget is 59 million zero five three one seven seven, which is a 41, one hundredths of a percent decrease, no property tax increase, the tax rate of point five nine seven three stays the same. Some of the large increases we had this year was our health insurance was 293,000. Our mandated retirement system increase was 346,000. And council, we had discussion on this at the June work session in terms of merit salary adjustment, at this moment in time, there is not one approved. We do have included a $500 one-time payment which would be paid to our employees in a lump sum the second week of August. And then what council discussed in June was that we would defer decision on merit adjustments, typically in good economic times, the city has done 2% merits across the board for the full year, so this proposal is a mid-year decision. I described that as, I think I described that in June, on June 1st as a toggle switch. We'll bring city council financial information in September at the end of our first fiscal quarter and then bring information again at December about how we're doing on our revenue collections, how we may be doing on receiving any federal reimbursements. And then council can make a decision in December about whether or not to approve a 1% merit increase that would go into effect for January 2021. So that is a change from what we had talked about in my presentation in June and this is in keeping with what council shared at our June work session. The Link Transit decrease, we have cares funding that came through the Federal Transit Administration that is gonna help us on the operation side and so we will be able to avoid our $373,000 subsidy this year from the general fund budget and that was a big, that made a big difference for us in balancing this budget this year. We have a capital replacement and improvement program across the city and I mentioned 26 frozen positions and then four critical new positions in the city. And I mentioned twenty-six frozen positions and then four critical new positions in the city. And again, we talked a little bit about this last time. We do see some growth in our projected property taxes due to new development. So there will be some growth in the property tax receipts because there's more prop, more properties that have come on board. And we anticipate more positive things happening during the fiscal year. And we've checked in with all our builders and developers. And so there continues to be progress and activity in our community, which is really, really good news. So one change in this slide since I did this presentation. There is, we have decreased our projected sales tax revenues in keeping with that pay change, proposed pay change. And so we're now projecting our sales tax revenue at eleven and a half percent less than what was received last year. And that's again, due to our concerns about consumer activity around the spending. And then finally, our building permit revenues are projected to remain consistent and pretty much stay where they have been. On the expenditure side of the general fund, again, just a reminder, we ask all our departments to do limited number of budgets. They did a wonderful job with that. We have a handful of increases such which I think I have already talked about. Our toggle switch review that'll happen in December. And then we always have challenges with health insurance, cost rising, our mandated retirement contribution increase, which I mentioned. And then one of the things that happens each year is our maintenance and service contracts across all of our departments. Are constantly kind of in flux and we, we, we struggle to keep those flat. Some of those go up and not at our choosing, obviously. And then we budgeted a little extra money for utilities as well. I think we've already covered the major infrastructure and capital, so I'll skip that slide. And then finally, this is sort of the overall picture. Council just note that revenues are at fifty-nine million oh fifty-three, one seventy-seven. And expenditures are there as well. So it is a balanced budget proposal. I'm going to skip the pie chart and then these were just a summary. This, this slide has not changed. This is a, just a summary of our revenue sources. I'll also skip the expenditure pie chart, but it's in packets if anyone wants to take a look. Our water resources fund, I'll transition. So we operate two funds, as you know, general fund and water resources fund. These are the same, these are all the divisions of our water resources fund. The proposed budget in the water resources fund is thirty-one million, one eighty-seven. That number has not changed since we talked on June first. It includes a two percent increase in water and sewer rates. The average, average residential customer will see an increase of ninety cents per month. The revenue, water usage projected flat or sewer usage is projected flat. And again, we're proposing a two percent increase in water and sewer rates. Key expenditures here are capital. And again, we talked about the details of these last time with city council. So I'll skip the next two slides, but we've got a number of system investments across the system again, to keep our infrastructure strong. And to make sure that we can always provide water and properly take care of our sewer. Water resources fund, again, the revenues and expenditures balance, that's thirty-one million, one eighty-seven, eight thirty-eight. You see that on both sides of the ledger. I'll skip the, skip the pie charts again. Water sewer rates with the two percent increase we proposed, the cost per day change to a resident of Burlington uses our water is two cents. Two cents per day would be the change for a twenty-five thousand, excuse me, a twenty-five hundred gallon user. For a five thousand gallon user, you'll see it's a three cent per day change in their rates. Let me transition to another fund now. This is our transportation fund. This is our now award-winning leaked transit program. And we're happy to report three hundred fifty-two thousand riders and that was just updated through April. So we've exceeded that. And we're thrilled to hear the good news from the transit association about our, our good, good work on safety. Our proposed budget here on transportation is two million, eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight ninety-two. And just as a reminder to council, we are very, very happy to have the CARES Act funding. That will come in and take care of a hundred percent of our subsidy and, and those expenses this year. So let me transition to another fund. As you know, the city operates a number of funds. The stormwater fund will keeping that, no change in the rate, that will continue to be seven dollars per month. And again, this is just making sure that we just try to limit and reduce the discharge of pollutants. We keep an eye on a list of discharges. We run a robust public education program. And we try to assist residents with drainage and flooding. We had a good bit of conversation in the past year on that. There's another slide here which folks have seen before. These are our other smaller funds across the city. And you can see those are all balanced with revenues and expenditures matching up. Let me just remind, we talked about fundamentals and our best practices, fiscal sustainability. Keeping our own capital improvement planning when we can do that, striving to preserve cash. That's even more important, obviously, in the crisis that we're in nationwide and statewide with the economics uncertainty that comes with COVID nineteen. And so we want to continue to try to do that. And we have started our OPEB contributions. This will be our second year of setting aside funding for other post-employment benefits. And then finally, as we look forward, we think there's some opportunities to do some program-based budgeting. And do some more priority-based budgeting principles across the city. That's obviously going to be natural. As we decide to bring services back and try to determine which ones are the most essential and most in demand. We'll continue to seek service delivery partnerships, for example, like our Graham telecommunications contract we entered into last year. And I know council's had some interest in this and we've had some good discussion during May and June. About writing and adopting some more robust and new fiscal policies, particularly focusing on the fund balance policy. And we're going to get to work on that right away. So I will wrap up now and just remind city council, let me just do a summary of the changes since June first. Again, an overall general fund decrease of two hundred forty-three thousand from the adopted FY nineteen twenty budget. Reclassification of the public works director position from thirty-six to thirty-nine. Merit salary adjustment would be a mid-year decision by city council and a toggle switch type of review. Again, we'll bring you numbers in September. We'll bring them back in December and then let you consider and think about that at the December council meetings. For a possible one percent merit increase. We're projecting a decrease in the projected sales tax of eleven and a half percent less than last year's budget. And we're going to get to work, finance department staff and myself get to work right away on a new fund balance policy. And we'll bring some ideas to city council very, very soon. And then we'll obviously be preparing as, as, as soon as tomorrow. We will again, you know, trying to gather information, fiscal updates and be ready for a presentation in September. And December to council on what's happening. There are a couple of nuggets of good news that I'll share. And I'll go ahead and maybe I'll go for, hopefully to go ahead and do this now. We did get good news today. So again, there's, I think, hopefully, as we do have updates for you, we have good news to share. We did get excellent news today from Alamance County government. I want to thank all the Alamance County commissioners and the staff at Alamance County that have worked on this. But Mr. Brian Haygood, county manager notified us today. That the city has been allocated three hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars from the Alamance County CARES Act funding that was provided by the state legislature. We are very, very thrilled about that number. I feel like that's a very fair allocation. Sent Mr. Haygood a note of thanks earlier today and we're real excited about that. So we hope that we'll continue to be able to bring good news to the city council and none of that's contemplated in our budget proposal. So we hope to continue to gather good news. I think some council members are aware. And you've been involved in reaching out to our congressional delegation in Washington. Asking that future federal funds be allowed for some revenue replacement purposes. And we continue to hear small nuggets of good news. Obviously, no decision has been made, but in the early indications. Sound like there is some interest in Washington for that. So those are the kinds of things again, we'll bring you in September and December if those things are good. And obviously, the other thing we'll be looking for in September, December is what is happening on consumer spending. Across the, across the state and what that means for our sales tax collections. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will wrap up and just thank our budget team, Peggy Noel and Rachel, Bob Patterson. Also two folks in our finance department that really go the extra mile, Wendy Swank and Tracy Bose. Who were behind the scenes, making life better for all of us here at city hall. I also want to thank all our department heads for their really, really good job. They prepared a budget, as you know, that was pre-COVID. And then we had to pivot, COVID hit us about the time we were sitting down to do our budget meetings with our departments. So we had to pivot very, very quickly, not only adjust the budget, but adjust how we do, how we provide services this spring and summer. So the department has done an amazing job. Folks have put in lots and lots of hours to get us where we are today. So thank you all for your guidance. So for your leadership, you ask great questions. You bring forward good points. You send me pieces of information that are very helpful and we appreciate all of that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will conclude my remarks and see if there are council questions and then we have the public hearing to conduct.
Thank you, manager. We appreciate your hard work and all staff participation on that budget. As you mentioned, retooling and pivoting as the pandemic unfolded. So any council questions before we begin the public hearing? All right, we'll begin our public hearing for public hearing item agenda number two, which is the adoption of the bus budget for fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one. And the community development budget. Looks like we have. Looks like we have Aaron Heft who wishes to speak.
Hi, yes, am I on?
Yes, you are on. If you could state your name and address for the public record.
Yes, this is Aaron Heft. I'm at twenty-five oh, twenty-five oh three Parrish Street. Longtime listener, first time caller. I just wanted to say, I've seen it in some other cities around the country. That they've been able to provide masks for some of the citizens. And I wanted to just say, I thought that might be a, if that was possible. I thought that might be a nice thing to be able to provide. And so with that, I'll say thank you for your time. I yield my time. I don't know.
Thank you, Aaron. We appreciate your call. All right, again, this is the public hearing for our fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. This time, anyone who wishes to speak can use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine if you are calling us. Give just another moment for any additional public comment. All right, it looks like we have no further public comments. So at this time, I will entertain a motion from our council to close the.
Mayor.
Yep.
We do have one email comment on the proposed budget.
If you'd like to read that into the record.
Yes, sir. This public comment was submitted by email on Friday, June the fifth, twenty twenty. By Emily Harmon of seventeen twenty Old Saint Mark's Church Road in Burlington. Her email says, Dear Mayor Baltudis and City Council. My name is Emily Harmon and I'm a resident of Burlington. I am writing to object to the allocation of over seventeen million to the Burlington Police Department in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one city budget. It is indefensible to increase the police budget when thousands of our community members face unemployment and housing and food insecurity in the midst of the COVID nineteen pandemic. The police cannot protect us from any of those challenges. Reallocate the money to the things that can protect us, housing assistance, food resources, more PPE. And many other resources that have direct impacts on our community's sustainability beyond this moment. This should be a time to support constituents through the good work of the community development department. Rather than increasing funds to the nation's nearly broke system of policing. That concludes the comment from Emily Harmon. Manager Watkins did respond to Ms. Harmon's comment via email on June the seventh, twenty twenty.
Okay. Thank you very much, clerk.
You're very welcome.
Mayor, I have one question before we call for a motion. Harden and Peggy, on the CARES Act funding that the, the county provided us, obviously very appreciative of that. But the three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars there, will that be a budget amendment when we receive that?
I'll, I'll let Peggy take, we did request to the county that we receive that. We indicated before, when we applied and I reminded them today, we would like to receive that after July one. And so I'll take, let Peggy take it from there.
We would not necessarily have to do a budget amendment because we budgeted expenses that. And we turned in expenses to Alamance County for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. That met the qualifications basically of either preparing, preventing or responding to COVID nineteen issues. And we were going to have those costs anyway. And so they are already in our budget. So it, we don't necessarily have to do a budget amendment. We can if we see the need to.
So if we had those costs anyway figured into our budget, but we didn't have the revenue figured into our budget. It looks to me like it should be an amendment for that.
You can always receive more money, more revenue than you budgeted. But you do not, you cannot spend more than you budgeted. So that's why if it would created an extra expenditure, we would have to do a budget amendment.
Yeah, I understand we can, we can receive more, just like we can get more property tax and more sales tax. But it sort of gets lost in the shuffle if it's not part of the accounting stream. And that's a lot of money. And we've got, we, it, it actually exceeds the amount that we cut our budget. So I would just like to be sure that we're very mindful of that as we continue to try to be fiscally responsible moving forward. That's, that's really what, what I'm getting at with it.
We will be.
Mr. Butler, would you like, would that be appropriate to bring up at our September work session and as, as we look at.
Yeah, I just don't want it to get lost in the narrative of what, all, all the things that we're trying to do. Because a lot of this is going to change anyway. We don't know what our sales tax is going to do. We just don't know how things are going to pan out. But I would like to keep this as part of the narrative, just so it doesn't get lost in translation. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And that was, that was my interest in, in asking them to provide it after July one. So it can help us with problems that we don't know we're going to have.
Exactly.
Twelve months. I think we, we all realize with fourteen days to go, we're going to survive this fiscal year. We're going to be okay. We survived it fiscally. We don't know what's going to happen next fiscal year. And I thought that would be really a, a real help. As we tackle things that we don't know we're going to have to tackle.
Right.
Very good. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing on this?
Oh, move. Second.
Motion to close public hearing made by council member Ward, seconded by council member Butler. All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is passed unanimously. Votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Public hearing is now closed regarding public hearing item number two. This time, are there any further council questions or do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Mayor, if I could, I'm not sure how many people had an opportunity today to join the, the virtual league presentation. And Dr. Mike Wallen, fairly well-known economist from NC State spoke and did a really nice job in, in, in projections. And I'm just going to share briefly, of course, these are all just projections in terms of, as he looked at the, the rebound. From this financial situation. He went back to basically the beginning of this year and his comment was that there was a sense of a recession beginning really in February. But so he went back, the first quarter of this, of this year, two thousand twenty, there was a five percent decrease in the GDP. Second quarter, which we're in now, this is projections between a twenty, twenty-five or thirty percent drop depending. Third quarter of October, his projection, so twenty-three percent growth in the GDP. The fourth quarter, his projections show eleven percent growth in the GDP. And then in two thousand twenty-one, he indicated that the least that many have now, there will be like a three percent growth. For each quarter throughout the year. So his philosophy was that this thing will take through twenty-one into parts of twenty-two to get back to where we were. But it was interesting, the, his basis behind this in, in, in the sense that. Evidently from a accountant or excuse me, an economist standpoint, there are various recovery methods which they utilize. And one is the L recovery, which means that it goes down, it goes across, and that's the depression, which we hope we never get to. He mentioned the W concept, which is like a W goes down, up, down, up. Then the, the V, which it goes straight down, comes straight back, which is really great, which we like to have. But what he's. Well, what he's projecting is something he calls, his projection is a down, a up, and then a gentle, not, not, not all the way back, but a gentle increase in terms of the GDP over a period of time. He made a couple of really interesting comments though, that I, I was fascinated by. That's this good news for the state. And for all of us for that matter. First of all, he said that what, that his colleagues across the country, every state has a brand and he doesn't think North Carolina's brand has been damaged by this, which is good for potential economic development in the long term. He had indicated that there's many people now thinking that as a result of the density of the Northeast, New York, Boston, possibly Philadelphia, maybe Pittsburgh area that those brands may take a hit, which gives them opportunities for the Sun Belt, which goes back to our need to be prepared for hopefully additional economic activity. And certainly we all can hope for some help from the national level in terms of infrastructure investment. And the other part was for tourism for our state. His comment was that a majority, a large majority of the people who vacation in North Carolina drive. And his philosophy on that was that would be a great benefit because driving appears to be much more in favor of people now than flying. So, you know, he, he was he was very straightforward, but also very encouraging and the effort of hopes that the economy will get back to where we once were and hopefully prosper from that in the long term for the state. So I was, it's a fascinating presentation that he put forth and he is actually coming out with a book. And August is called the deficit, excuse me, the common sense answers to most pressing problems. He also recommended another book, if any of you all would like to read it, it's called The Deficit Myth, which is an interesting concept about the deficit and how money is basically printed and how that plays into, you know, what the deficit really is and how it's interpreted by people, national deficit, which is always sort of fascinated me too was because reality, but we print the money as federal government and how that goes from here. One other comment he made I thought was, was just fascinating and I asked Peggy this today. He said that the real variables are going to look at it in terms of how important e-business has taken off. And I know Jim has talked to me about the auto business in terms of e-business. And he indicated really that most businesses now going forward, there's certainly a business model, e-business is something that has to be considered. And also in reference to kind to, to track the boost for online buying, he mentioned there was a process to do that, which I, he didn't go further in that. I talked to Peggy today about hopefully we could, could look into that. The questions that like we all probably face is what's going to happen in terms of telemarketing or excuse me, tele, teleproduction and telework? How that's going to impact larger office buildings in reference to office space or not? And, and you know, his philosophy was he truly believed by the end of 21 or possibly early 22, financial standpoint that the normalcy would be back, which honestly is a little bit quicker, actually a much quicker recovery than the Great Recession we had in oh eight, oh nine and oh 10. Municipal side, you know, he took us really until 14 to recover from that particular downturn. So it's a, I believe you can go to the league website and get that presentation. It's, it's worth your time to, to listen and how he presented that today.
I attended that as well, Harold. And the one thing that I thought was very positive is that he feels that the economy may already be recovering.
Yes, 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 he does. Yeah, he's, he's, it was, it was very not just uplifting in terms of his approach, but you know, he has facts to sort of back it up. Obviously, you know, a second issue with the COVID, you know, no one knows, but it was very good, I thought.
Yeah, I thought he made another point about that related to the potential financial impact of COVID related to death and if we had lost enough people from the workforce and the cost to come back. And I thought that he noted that the work the municipalities and governments did to protect people's lives with the stay at home orders was far less costly than the potential impact that the disease could have had. And I thought that was interesting coming from an economist to.
Yeah, it was. It was. It was. It was. It was very well done. Yes.
And I believe he was, it was him or another speaker that also spoke as we're going through budgeting, talking about the, the access to capital right now for cities to finance things. Spoke about the financing rates being so low that they are highly encouraging cities to look forward at capital projects or any projects that you've got on your radar and to finance them now. And that's a discussion we've already started having with this budget process. So if you can pull some of those things forward, start that financing process, the financing cost is significantly lower right now. It's a good session. We've got two more days of city vision. I appreciate the league making that available free to all municipalities across North Carolina. Other comments related to this agenda item from council or do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the budget as presented for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Second.
And Councilmember Owen, does that include the 2021 Grant Ordinance and Community Development Program in your motion?
Yes, I mean, that, that was not really highlighted tonight, but it was obviously highlighted at the work session two weeks ago.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, any questions regarding the motion to approve? All right, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously with votes for myself, Mayor Protem Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. That completes public hearing number two on our agenda and brings us into the new business phase of our agenda. City Council will consider item three, approving a more memorandum of understanding for a service level agreement between the City of Burlington and Burlington Downtown Corporation, Inc. This time we'll recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I am going to also share my screen with you with a short presentation. So I'll wait momentarily to get that permission. Hope everybody is having a good evening. It looks like it stopped raining at the moment, so.
We have news for now.
Okay, here we go. And hopefully we are off and running.
All right, so that screen should be coming up for folks and you should be able to see the visuals. Go ahead.
So I am here this evening to talk about our transition to a hybrid model for our downtown municipal service district services. This is a follow-up to a discussion we had a little over a month ago at a work session in May, one of our first virtual work sessions, where we introduced the idea of adding a memorandum of understanding and some of the changes that staff were proposing to the relationship with the Burlington Downtown Corporation. And we'll be looking at that formal agreement tonight and staff will be asking you to approve that memorandum of understanding for the final contract year with the Burlington Downtown Corporation. Three years ago, staff presented you a three-year contract that was approved in 2018. So there's one more year for this service contract for the Municipal Service District with the Burlington Downtown Corporation. So just to refresh from our discussion last time, why staff were considering a downtown hybrid model? And what exactly does that mean? What is a hybrid model? Well, right now, the relationship that the City of Burlington has is a contractual relationship with a private nonprofit, the Burlington Downtown Corporation. What we are proposing to do is to essentially swap the staff member who is a, is an employee of the Burlington Downtown Corporation and make them a city employee and still contract for services with the, with the board of the Burlington Downtown Corporation. Why are we considering doing that? Well, over half of the municipal service districts currently in North Carolina and Main Street communities do have this setup. We had an opportunity to review our relationship and our status quo. And I think anytime we have an opportunity to possibly do something more efficiently, we're going to take that opportunity. We now have a formal Economic Development Office and Division here at the City of Burlington. That's something that was different and an opportunity for us to look at. We did some consultation with the Main Street, North Carolina Main Street Office for best practices. And Liz Param, the director there and Sheri Adams, her second in command, both highlighted some good hybrid organization resources and examples. Main Street Communities in Salisbury, in Rocky Mount, and also in Wilson have recently transitioned to this model. And I believe Manager Watkins oversaw a transition to a hybrid, hybridized downtown model when he was at the Town of Garner. So it's a common thing to happen and it's become a best practice for communities to look at a hybrid model and also look at a memorandum of understanding. Making this change provided some savings to the City of Burlington and to the MSD District. We're saving about $80,000 in making this transition and bringing the employee in-house. We feel that we're going to maintain a strong merchant and business-led board that was appointed previously and has worked very well with the interim downtown manager and with city staff. And we're going to talk a little bit about some downtown momentum that was picking up before the COVID-19 issues and that we're hoping to continue with this hybrid transition. So what changes when we make this transition with the BDC? Well, first, as I already mentioned, the biggest change is that the director of the downtown effort in Burlington will now be a city employee and not an employee of the Burlington Downtown Corporation. That being a city position, there will be more alignment in our messaging from the greater economic development, citywide picture down to the downtown portion. We talk often, and I know City Manager Watkins and Mayor Baltudis do, when, when we're out in the community about the different ways that the city does economic development, the different ways that we invest in economic development. Certainly, the airport is one of those assets that we invest in and our downtown is another asset that we invest in and, and certainly have a place in. This downtown manager will provide support to the Main Street community and help populate the Main Street boards with the BDC board. They will provide that administrative support, marketing support, and everything that we need to maintain our status as a Main Street community. And then we'll be doing shared merchant relations with the BDC board and the staff member, the now city staff members. And then as far as what stays the same, well, I think first and foremost, the City of Burlington has been a Main Street community for 32 years and we intend to remain a Main Street community. That's a designation that is earned by having a full-time staff member that dedicates 40 hours a week to Main Street issues and businesses. And it is our intent to do that with Sarah Beth Hardy and with an, with the downtown manager. So we are going to remain a Main Street community that gives us access to great professional development resources for staff, for great business resources and planning resources for developers and businesses and entrepreneurs in our downtown. It provides access to the Main Street Solutions Fund, which the City of Burlington and the, of course, now closed Cooperative Market were successful in getting and which we are hoping will be funded in future years. So there are some benefits to being a part of that Main Street community in North Carolina and in the National Main Street Program. So we are going to maintain that status. One of the most successful things that the Burlington Downtown Corporation has done and that the City of Burlington Council has funded is the Downtown Grants Program. That will remain very much the purview of that merchant and business-led board. So peers and business owners and building owners are going to be helping make decisions on the best investments in downtown Burlington. We're going to continue to have our strong collaborations amongst the BDC Board, our city council and our Burlington events, B-Town Events and Recreation and Parks Staff and our Paramount Theater for public art and also for capital projects as we move forward. And, and I think what's been very exciting about this past year, year and a half, in my closer experience with the Burlington Downtown Corporation, has been the board members who volunteer their time and effort and who are a part of the fabric of that community and this organization that will be able to continue working with them and nurturing some very special projects that the committees are working on and that the cities had their eyes on for a while. And then finally, what I mentioned, some momentum going on. I was pleased to hear Councilmember Owen talk about Dr. Walden's comments and some of the things that we, we may be seeing and experiencing. And perhaps this is a note or a data point that we can share, but the last two grant cycles that the BDC has gone through and that I've been a part of making some decisions on have been very robust and we've seen some very interesting projects coming to downtown after a couple of years of quiet since the Burlington Beer Works had opened. So the Owl and the Rabbit and the Lewis family purchased some properties on Spring Street and have relocated the Owl and the Rabbit Gallery and made some investments in those properties. After the Owl and Rabbit left, if you've been to the Blend recently, you'll see they're about to open and expand an indoor area and cafe space in downtown. And we're excited to see that expansion and success of that business. A long, almost condemned and falling apart building at 135 West Davis Street recently received a downtown building outfit grant and is going to be outfitted as a tap house with an apartment. The Mary Catherine's Building that has been vacant for some time is moving forward with permits for condominiums to be constructed on the second floor. I mentioned the Lewis family purchasing properties on Spring Street. One of those is being upfit for a new bakery for downtown. And then we have the previously mentioned and much talked about Burlington Food Hall and Go Burrito Project that is moving forward for core properties and Wellesley Robinson. So despite there being some difficult news and some retail projects having some difficulty throughout the country and even locally, we see some good signs of momentum, some positivity. And a lot of this, I'll say directly to city council as a result of you funding grant programs over the last few years and that money is being invested directly into new business ventures and new property investments here in downtown. I do want to give an opportunity for Sarah Beth Hardy, who is on the call to possibly share any additional comments and Coleman Rich, who is the currently the president of the Burlington Downtown Corporation Board of Directors is also on the call with us. If they had anything to add to this presentation, I'd ask them to do so at this time.
Coleman, Sarah Beth.
Can you hear me?
There we go, Coleman. We've got you.
Yeah. This is Coleman Rich and we had a, our board met last Thursday and we unanimous, unanimously passed this, this motion to move forward with this. So we supported, we supported 100%. And looking forward to the new relationship.
Very good. Thank you. Sarah Beth.
Hey, I've just did what Coleman said. We're really excited and again, to what Peter was talking about, all of our conversations with Main Street folks. This seems like a very positive and necessary change. And so I'm excited to work with Peter's team and to keep moving forward. And I know that our board members and committee members, lots of volunteers who are so passionate about downtown are really excited. So thanks.
Thank you. Any council questions for BDC team? I've got them here or for Peter? We appreciate those comments. All right. Do I hear a motion regarding this agenda item?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Burlington Downtown Corporation.
Do I hear a second regarding this item?
Second.
Alright, motion to approve the memorandum of understanding made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please indicates by saying aye and raising your hand. All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Sarah Beth Hardy and thank, thank you, Coleman Rich for all of your work. And for preparing this item for us. We look forward to 32 additional years of partnership and building our downtown together. Alright, next on our agenda is item four, city council will consider a request from our Economic Development Department. Why on behalf of the city of Burlington for U.S. Economic Development Administration grant funding To local governments to support infrastructure projects that support job creation and investment. And provide recovery to local economies impacted by COVID-19. This time we'll again recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. Here I am again and hopefully you can see my screen again.
Green share is up, folks should be able to see the graphics now.
I'm very proud of sharing, so it's very high quality, I like it a lot. So we're talking about, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Owen, we're both talking about opportunities to fund infrastructure projects during COVID-19 and looking for Shovel-ready projects and ways that we can use federal funds and leverage them to get, get going forward. And so this is just that, the, the Economic Development Administration was ordered $1.5 billion in the CARES Act funding. And that is directed and funneled through some of their traditional infrastructure programs. The Economic Adjustment Assistance Program being the one that we're looking directly at. And this program is intended to support communities who have faced significant setbacks and economic damage and injury due to COVID-19 and the coronavirus. They do require there to be a public or a private beneficiary, rather, a private company that Will create jobs or invest based on these infrastructure investments, so there is a partnership required between local government and a private company. And We're trying to be as shovel-ready as possible, as I mentioned. So we have selected two projects that are close to shovel-ready or as close as we believe to be shovel-ready. The first Maybe somewhat familiar to you at city council, this is our Airport and Industrial Sewer Outfall. It is a 5,000-foot outfall pipe connecting the LabCorp hanger area down past the city, old city landfill. And through about 400 to 500 acres of drainage area that has great industrial potential. So this project is sort of two birds with one stone, we're looking to serve LabCorp's future aviation expansion and hangars and classroom space and mechanic space out at our airfield through this pipe. And we're also looking to open up that 400 to 500 acres of land that would directly drain into this Potential outfall for future industrial development. So that is the first project that we're looking to promote. And the price tag is just under $1.2 million for this pipe. The second project that we're looking to fund is a little bit smaller and it would support a new development project that's looking at the west side of White's Kennel Road. It's an interesting elevation parcel in that it doesn't drain well, it would be very expensive to serve this property To the south and to the west with a gravity sewer. And we could serve it through some existing sewer that was built to serve Sheets when Sheets was located in 2013, 2014. So we are proposing a $361,000, about 1,200-foot sewer outfall to serve a new industrial development. That would create some jobs and about 3 million investment on this 13 to 14-acre parcel on White, White's Kennel Road. All told, this is an 80/20 program, so the federal government would pay 80% of all project costs and the local government would be covering 20%. If we were to get both of these projects, that 20% total match to the city budget would be about $308,000 plus or minus. So that's about how much we'd be looking to commit in a future budget action if we are successful obtaining both of these grants. And that is all I have.
Very good. Peter, if you wouldn't mind going back to that last slide.
Yes. This slide, yes, sir.
The parcel that you're trying to connect to, could you just kind of explain that connection a little more?
Yes, it's, it's this trapezoidal, I'm sorry, there I go again. It's this trapezoidal piece right here that says beneath, inside sheet C2 and then there's an additional trapezoid right here.
Okay, so it's that south of western from the sheets.
Yes.
Thank you.
Entire property is, is under contract to a knitting manufacturer and This would significantly decrease the city's and the company's cost to connect to our sewer.
Very good.
I will also state that this property is not currently in the city limits, so we'd be gaining an annexation And utility customer for a property that's not currently in our city limits.
Very good. Other questions from council regarding this budget or this item? Say great work connecting kind of these projects we've been working with. Speaks to the value of getting things shovel-ready as we've been working around the airport. So always good to do your homework, you never know what opportunity will come around. Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
Make a motion that we approve the application for grant funding with the U.S. Economic Development Administration for the two projects that were described.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Butler to approve, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion to approve?
Peter, what was that figure that you said would be the match number?
$308,000 for both projects. If we were successful with each and It would be 200, about 236,000 for the bigger project. And about $72,000 for the smaller White's Kennel Road project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pretty good. Any other questions regarding the motion? Alright, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Next on our agenda, item number five, city council will consider temporarily closing a portion of city parking lot number one. Beginning on Wednesday, June 24th, 2020 until Monday, June 29th, 2020. For the United Way of Alamance to host a Spirit of Alamance Food Drive. Special event contingent upon meeting all requirements of the city of Burlington's special events permit application process. And this time we'll recognize Recreation Supervisor and Special Events Emily Crowley.
Thank you, Mayor, this is council and thank you for bearing with my connection issues earlier. The weather does add things to my internet. United Way came to me with a request to partially close lot number one. Just on the corner of Webb Avenue and Spring. For a drive-through Community food drive that they'd like to host next week. They have a tractor trailer being donated that would need to park in lot number one. For multiple days and then as you can see in the map provided in your packet. Just on that Thursday date from nine to four, excuse me, nine to four on Thursday. It would be requesting that corner be blocked off for the safety of their staff and volunteers. Their information is all on file, I've got their certificate of insurance. And Ann Connolly with United Way is on the call as well to give a bit more information.
Welcome in.
So we are hoping to have everything said and done by Friday afternoon and have the tractor trailer removed then.
And do you want to share additional information?
Okay, yeah, we're just going to have a drive-through, so they'll be entering off of Spring Street. And going towards the back of the parking lot there on Webb Avenue. And it will just be a drive-through, we'll have a little tent out there. We'll have masks and safety precautions and all that good stuff.
Alright, any questions from council regarding this request?
Sounds like a good community project.
Thank you.
Alright, do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I move we approve the request to temporarily close a portion of city lot number one during the food drive. Contingent upon meeting all special events application process requirement.
Do I hear a second? Alright, motion to approve made by Council, or Mayor Protam Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Ward. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has passed unanimously with votes from myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and Councilmembers Ward, Butler and Owen. Emily and Ann, thank you so much, we look forward to a successful event.
Thank you.
Hopefully the weather cooperates.
Yeah, let's hope.
Alright, next on our agenda is item six, city council will consider appointments to the 2020, 2021 Advisory Board and Commissions. This time we'll recognize Public Information Specialist John Vernon.
Hello, Mayor and council members. This year, 40 residents applied to serve on one of Burlington's 12 advisory boards and commissions. Per the city's Code of Ordinances, Section 2-80, council may appoint members to fill this year's vacancies it chooses. The new terms mostly begin on July 1st, though the terms for the Alamance County Library Committee and the Burlington Alamance Airport Authority will begin later this year. I know the applications are a lot to wade through, but I think we're fortunate that so many residents are interested in helping to shape our city's future. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, I know that you had, had some plans for the Appointments already.
I would like to ask to table this particular item to the next meeting. Because some question, I still have some questions about some of the recommendations.
Alright, so that would be tabled to June 7th or July 7th for our council meeting. Do I hear a second to that motion? Second to the motion requesting to table this item to Ju-, July 7th. Alright, do we hear no second to that motion, so it does not proceed. Discussion regarding the Boards and Commissions' applications.
Mayor, if I could, may I ask a question of Kathy?
Sure, go ahead.
Is it, do you have several questions or is it just? Is it some, the reason I'm asking is it some that we can approve? And some that you want to be held? And it may be, it may be some merit in holding everything, I don't know, but Could you explain a little bit more, you know? You know, really the basis of your request?
Yeah, it's more than one. One is a person who didn't request one of the, the boards that we're assigning them to and another is a residency issue.
Well, it certainly sounds like something that That needs to be resolved and And it may be, you know, I, I, I'd be inclined to, you know, second the motion, but I'd like to hear from the others if they'd be willing to do so. Apparently, you know, not getting a second on a thing. As a matter, as a matter of courtesy or, you know, protocol. I'm not so sure that it'd be that difficult to do. The only thing that I'd be concerned with, that most people take their offices, you know, beginning July 1st, but it, you know, the next meeting is not that far off, but And under the code, I believe that the current members would serve until their successors are appointed, so I don't know that there's any practical problems. Unless somebody meets in early, early July, so. I'd be, I, I, I would, I would like to hear from others, you know, whether we'd like to go ahead and confirm what we have or, or to You know, continue to the next meeting. I'm assuming it can be resolved, but by the next meeting, so.
Yeah, and you are correct, Councilmember Ward, as far as there's been no indicated significant issue to continuing this as far as the appointment of folks. Under current precedent, existing board and committee members would continue in their office until the new appointments. And based on the meeting schedule, it does not look like there'll be any difficulties.
Certainly, the residency issue is, is I mean, that one's very legitimate in and of itself without, without any explanation, so if there's There's an issue there, I certainly would like to get that resolved. We have had, we have had applicants in the past that we've asked them to serve On other boards different than what they may have originally applied for, so. I, I think we've got precedent in, in how we've operated in the past on that, but The residency piece is very much something that we've got to get resolved.
That's my thinking.
That is correct, Jim, to however, in the past, when we do ask for a change, we usually get approval from the Individual before the council vote on it. And so I think Mayor Protam Hikes, that's part of the request, if I'm clear. Just to make sure that we have that approval before Wanting the person in. Any other questions regarding this? Alright, otherwise, Bob, are you officially seconding the previous motion?
Well, you know, it's, I was just thinking if it's some that could be done, in other words, we pull off the ones that couldn't be done. Is that a possibility? And maybe, it may be just as well doing them all at one time, but if it's one, you know, of, if any, you know, particular concern. I can certainly see, you know, delaying that to get it resolved. So But like I said, it's like Jim said, is, you know, the one about the, whether or not somebody's a resident, that clearly needs to be resolved. And the, you know, I'm not really certain about, you know, the other Issues that may be involved in any appointments. How many, are there, are there some that've been recommended that have not been contacted or, you know, that That really has a courtesy that should be contacted before they find out they've been appointed, do we know that for a fact?
Yes, that's, that's one of the items and I think because we have so many folks who apply for multiple boards and commissions. To prevent a kind of shuffling effect, if we do have to backfill a position, it would be my preference that we do these all together. If that's amenable to the rest of council. So if you're okay with that, Bob. Alright, can we have a second to that motion?
Well, I, I, I'm going to second it, you know, but I, I Well, I, I, I'm gonna second it, you know, but I I I will say something now for for the record. Uh, the ones that I have suggested. Uh, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know that I'm gonna change my position. I'd like, I'd like to say that now. And secondly, if there's some other things that need to be resolved. Uh, I'm certainly willing to work on that. And so having said that. Uh, you know, I I'll be, I'll be happy to second the motion and, you know, just with that uh, with that background and coming from my position. So I'll say, I'll second the motion, you know, to the, to continue this to the first meeting of July.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the motion to continue this to the July seventh meeting? All right, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed?
Motion to continue, uh, table is to July seventh has passed unanimously with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, John, for this work on this. As you mentioned, we had quite a few applicants, which is always encouraging. We appreciate folks stepping up to serve. It, on one hand, makes our job a little easier, uh, because we have a great pool of candidates, but on the other hand, we have a lot of folks to go through. So we appreciate that extra time. All right, that concludes our regular agenda items this evening. Next on our agenda is our public comment period. Public comments have been requested via email, uh, and then folks can also uh, submit them now via Zoom using the raise hand feature or by if you're dialing in pressing star nine. Um, and so if you do have any technical details or technical questions, John Vernon is standing by. His number again is three, three, six. Make sure I get it again, three, three, six, five, one, three, five, four, four, zero, if you need support during the public comment period. So this is the beginning of public comments. We did receive two emailed comments, so. I'm gonna call on our callers first and then we'll read in our comments after that. Uh, it looks like we have Donna Van Hook. Donna, if you could, uh, state your address for the record before you begin your comment.
Donna Van Hook, three, one, seven Caswell Street, Burlington, North Carolina.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor Bautu- Tootus, Mayor Pro Tem Hites. And City Manager Watkins for following through on your response to my public comment during the June second, twenty twenty Burlington City Council meeting. Thank you all for engaging in dialogue with me and my two colleagues on June fifteen, twenty twenty about Burlington Police Department and the policing of black and brown communities. Within an hour and a half period set aside for deliberating on the subject, my two colleagues and I spoke with uh, Chief Jeffrey Smythe and City Manager Harden Watkins on November thirty first, twenty nineteen. We agreed to submit to Mr. Watkins a proposal in seven to ten days with regards to an advisory group for transformative accountability and civilian oversight of Burlington Police Department. In the meeting, I personally and frankly spoke as a former certified law enforcement officer, in addition to being a black female resident of Burlington, who has worked closely with Burlington Police Department since two thousand and sixteen, yet do not feel safe during this time in the city or even surrounding cities in this county. On yesterday, you showed little interest in black lives, um, unlike you did or claimed you did during the photo op on May the thirty first, twenty twenty at North Park. I referenced the two subsequent Facebook Live videos you posted on your public Mayor Ian Bautu- Tootus Facebook page I liked and follow as your constituent. In one video, you claimed a call to action is a street name change to MLK. That, Mr. Mayor, has been a request from the black community since I was a young adult over thirty, thirty years ago. This empty promise does not demonstrate or affirm your care for black lives in Burlington and how we are policing the city. During the same meeting on yesterday, I made reference to policing black residents based on your assessment of how well Burlington Police Department has been using the Eight Can't Wait campaign. The campaign is problematic and glorifying Burlington Police Department does not save black or brown lives either. I do not want to become the next Breonna Taylor, who was killed by police on a no-knock warrant. I do not want to be the next George Floyd, who had the weight of a white male officer on his neck for eight minutes and forty-six seconds. Crying out, "I can't breathe," and while also calling for his deceased mother. I noted here in Burlington, Bobby Harvey told officers, "I can't breathe" when more Burlington Police Officers were on his, on top of his, uh, body in a ditch on Daly Street, October the fourth, twenty nineteen. Harvey was essentially hogtied by multiple officers in, with a rip-hobble device and placed in a cruiser face down. This is apparent in the body cam videos released by Burlington Police Department. I demand at this time, Burlington Police Department discontinue the use of rip-hobble, uh, devices, hog tying, and changes policies and procedures to reflect the same. Lastly, I say Burlington, uh, Police Department or any other police department cannot police themselves. We look forward to working with the city council to implement an advisory group for oversight of Burlington Police Department. Thank you for this time. I say all this in light of the civil unrest across the globe.
Thank you, Donna. We appreciate those comments. Uh, next for public comment, we have Barbara Enick Day. Barbara, if you could state your address for the record.
Uh, Barbara Enick Day, eight, zero, nine Ray Street, Burlington, North Carolina. And I ha- I know I have five minutes and I thank you, uh, Mayor and council members for allowing me to speak. Um, I want to speak on uh, a request that was made, uh, about Dudley Street and the light. I don't, I don't know, his name is Mr. Dunn or Mr. None. This request was made several months ago, uh, and I was told by him at one of the meetings, uh, uh, at the, uh, of the city council that, um, it's been passed over to the state, but he uh, in in layman's turn, he'll, they'll get to it when it gets to it. Tomorrow will mark, uh, one year, uh, that Reginald Jeffries was killed there, uh, on Rawhut Street. And as I mentioned before, that you can come from Shaw Road where Blackwell's Funeral Home, all the way to Head Street before there's another light. And a lot of people in this community, they walk. So I find it to be a public safety issue. Uh, and I would like some follow-up on that. In addition, I am wanting to speak on the East Burlington. I think this has been brought to the attention of the city council. Uh, and specifically to Peter Bishop. It's nothing happening on East Burlington. I sit here and I watch and I ride out and I see things happening there uh, on the west side, downtown Burlington. The only thing that I see this one is, uh, coming up in East Burlington is at the Dollar General on North Church Street where the, where the Ollie Shopping Center is, there is a blood plasma place that's, that's, uh, about to, uh, be open at some point. And my question is, why do we need another blood plasma place? We got one that sits at, um, sits there on Wayab Avenue and in, uh, South Meven Street or Meven Street, no, but anyway. Um, that's the only business that I see is happening over there. And I'm just gonna tell you, it really pisses me off. Um, because I have the feeling that sometime I say, okay, well, if I gotta travel this far to uh, yeah, to get anything that I need, then I also have an option of driving over into another county, such as Orange County, Durham County, I can go to Gifford County. Uh, just to, you know, to get out and ride. So, you know, I, we're paying our tax dollars, but nothing is happening over on the side of East Burlington. And, um, and, you know, we, we need to see some, some development over there. We get that old Rite Aid building that could, um, potentially, uh, uh, be a local business there. Um, so that, that is my, uh, uh, issue of one that. Uh, I'mma briefly, uh, say something. I don't have the all the details, but I have, uh, had a conversation with someone. Um, on June twelfth, Friday, June twelfth, sometime in the afternoon, the police department responded to, uh, Pine No, that area, I think it's off of Morning Side. Uh, because perhaps there were two, uh, young men that was, uh, two black young men that was in the scuffle or they was about to scuffle. So the police was called, and when the police came, I understand that the police got out with pump shotguns. And we can't have that. So I like, I like for that incident to be, uh, investigated, um, by the Burlington Police Department, why would the officers need to get out with pump shotguns? And lastly, I'm gonna say that I I I look around the country and even here in Burlington, uh, even in the Sheriff's Department. I see some officers that it's not really physical fit for the job. I mean, they're overweight, so I, is there a requirement when you're going into military? You gotta keep your weight down, you know, because they can't run. And if they can't run, they're more apt to shoot a suspect, as we saw in the case of Rayshard Brooks down in, in Georgia. So I'm not sure what the, you know, put the protocol is, but we need healthy officers out there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stay. Next on public comment, uh, it looks like we have Bishop Hargrave.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay? I didn't have, I don't see the, uh, raise your hand for some reason.
We've got you. We can hear you just fine. So if you could state your address just for the public record.
Sure, seven, one, seven Cannonade Drive in Witsit, North Carolina is where I reside.
All right, go ahead.
Let me thank you, uh, first of all, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and all of the council members and the city manager for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you, uh, this evening. Uh, the purpose of, uh, addressing you tonight is to, um, update or to introduce you to a current affordable housing project that, uh, we are involved in presently. Uh, Curry Hayes Homes Incorporated, it's five oh one C three, is a subsidiary of Gospel Tabernacle Church. Um, in fact, um, we built twenty one-bedroom apartments for elderly and disabled nearly twenty years ago. Um, in fact, then city manager Owens, uh, now councilman, uh, was at that dedication. So, um, we have seen uh, how beneficial that has been for our community. Uh, and of course, uh, there are people that have lived there for over fifteen years. Um, and right now, I checked with the site manager today, we have thirty people on the waiting list for those apartments. We are alwa- always at a hundred percent occupancy. Um, in March of twenty nineteen, we acquired eleven acres of land that abuts this property. On the north side of this property is Apple Street, on the east side is Baldwin Road. And on the south side is St. John Street, which, um, dead ends into this property. Of course, on the west side is Curry Hayes Homes Incorporated. So we were very excited about that and began the process of looking at that. At that time, I came to city staff. Um, Joey Lee, over the years, have been just wonderful. And of course, um, I also met with Sonya Randolph and the staff there. Um, pretty much, and there, thank you, um, that must be John Vernon, yes, because then Scott has been very helpful.
Morgan, the house she sent over?
Yes, this is one of the houses that we built. Um, let me just say to date. Um, we obtained, um, of course, six permits, well, actually, uh, five of those. We, um, have six houses on the contract in four months. It is amazing. Uh, this is the first house, and this house is now completed. The resident is a static, a young lady that, uh, um, purchased this particular house. Um, and as we go through these pictures, uh, I'll update. This is the inside. Um, very nice, um, affordable homes. This is the kitchen. Uh. And, um, I'll just let you look at those pictures. Uh, we're very excited about what's going on there. Okay. These are, uh, these are three-bedroom, two-bath homes. For them in, in the mid-one hundreds. Okay, on this particular map, uh, the Leeds Group, uh, Chad Huffan, and he wanted to be on tonight. He had another meeting in Graham. What this, we are in technical review right now. Uh, we have moved very quickly. As I said, in four months, we have six houses on the contract. This is the proposed, um, property, and what we're looking to do in, in the next phase is to construct um, the road and connect St. John Street to Apple Street, which will actually open up at least ten more houses and uh, there are some, uh, townhouses that we're proposing, uh, that's in the, at the south end as well. Um, that's an area of that. Um, and of course, um, if you see where St. John comes in, you can see the proposed townhomes there. And as you can see, these are wonderful-sized lots, and you can see the, the road that goes through to Apple Street. Uh, one of the things that we've been able to do is we identified immediately those six lots that we could build on immediately. And, uh, again, um, they're gone in four months. I will say this, um, being on the ground and talking to these folks, uh, in fact, I talked to a young lady yesterday. Uh, I believe that there's a knowledge deficit about affordable housing, um, because what we have, we're committed to do now is um, and we have partnered with, um, Jay, um, at Allied uh, churches or allied ministries to have a HUD certified counselor. I'm finding in our ministry, uh, we have had, uh, meetings already uh, with folks who thought that they could never own a home. And we're counseling them and we're actually, I'm hand-delivering them to preferred lenders. Uh, before COVID, uh, hit, uh, we had a bank that was offering one hundred percent financing to these folks. Um, and what we're doing is we're getting them in the pipeline so that if they have, um, issues with their scores, um, with their credit scores, we are saying, hey, uh, we need you, um, to do this in the next three to six months. Um, I could go on and on. I know my time is limited. Um, I, I, I was actually in the meeting uh, on the analysis of the impediments to fair housing. I was, uh, one of the stakeholders that was at that meeting. I've been able to review the one hundred pages and I pulled some things out. I can assure you that there are things that I've seen on the ground and I'm talking to people that are substantiated in this report. Um, I've been pastoring in Burlington for thirty-five years. Um, all of our children, uh, went to, uh, Grove Park, Turntown, and Williams High School. All three of our girls graduated from Burlington. Um, I'm committed to Burlington. We just moved to Witsit. And by the way, I'm, uh, my water bill came from Burlington. Uh, I've only been here for about three months. But I said that to say that we are really committed to the community in Burlington. This is an outstanding opportunity for our ministry slash Curry Hayes Homes to partner with the city uh, to make this happen even the more. Um, I want to invite all of you. I will personally give you a tour of the land as well as any of the houses. We are going to close in the next two weeks on two more houses. Um, we have, well, you know, we've, uh, we paid those tab fees. We got a lot of soft costs in this project already. The Army Corps of Engineers have been out. We've had to pay them. Of course, the Leeds Group, the engineers, we paid all of them. And now we are, we are now about to look at cutting this road. So we need some help. I think it would be great. So we need some help. I think it would be great. It would be great for each Burlington. In fact, by what I was hearing, I'd like to talk to Mr. Bishop at some point as well. I think that that would be a good conversation. And I want to thank you for just a consideration. I'm very excited and passionate about this. And we already have many, many people in the pipeline, just getting them prepared. And I can assure you of six houses are gone in four months. I'm not so sure what's gonna happen once we cut this road. I feel like we're gonna be able to make an impact in Burlington. Thank you for your time and I'll be glad to answer any questions. I hope I didn't go over my time, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the initial meeting that we had. And I really appreciate the city manager for your input and everything. And I just appreciate you guys and I hope that we can partner. This is a great project in East Burlington.
Thank you, Bishop. We appreciate your vision and for carrying it out in a way that benefits our community.
Greg Harold Owen. The process in terms of, of going through the, the various city requirements, it has, where are you with that?
Councilman Owen, we we are in technical review. Chad Huffin with the Leeds Group has presented the layout. We knew we had to get the Army Corps of Engineers. The topography has been done. We have, we have paid Boswell Survey to do that. We are moving on. Our bank has been very supportive. And pretty much because of our relationship with the bank, we just put six houses in, in the pipeline immediately. And we're doing them two at a time and it's, again, they're all in the contract. So staff has been very supportive, have been very helpful to us. And that's where we are. We, we had the first phases of technical review and there's been some comments about the road and how it should be configured and certain other things. And one other thing I just wanted to mention, we have met with neighbors. We met with neighbors on some of their concerns and is very spirited. And they were very candid, but I really think that we tried to meet them where their concerns were as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It looks like that wraps up the public comment via Zoom and phone. At this time, we'll recognize Clerk Beverly Smith. We have two pre-submitted comments that she'll read into the record at this time.
We did have email submitted comments, but they were in attendance tonight. So Donna Van Hook spoke and so did Greg Hargrave. So those were the two comments that were submitted by email.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So that concludes our public comment for this evening. This time we'll move on to city council comments. And I'd like to actually begin by recognizing City Manager Harden Watkins. Now, Chair muted Harden.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna ask Finance Director Peggy Reese to join me for this part of conversation. Wanted just to share a little bit and just introduce an idea to city council. We did send a, an email message last week and Ms. Reese is gonna take this here, but wanted to discuss with council some installment financing options for the Carousel House project and the Carousel Animals and then a handful of other sort of non discretionary items that will give us an opportunity to take advantage of these low interest rates and obviously preserve some of our cash as we have talked about doing instead of having to use reserves. So I'm gonna yield the floor to Ms. Reese and she can walk you through some of those details.
The council for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. We have been listening to you and your comments in the past regarding the use of fund balance. And thank you, Mayor Ian for bringing up that Dr. Mike Walden said this is a good time to borrow due to the low interest rates. So due to all of that, we wanted to explore the opportunities of financing the carousel building and the carousel restoration that has been placed out for bids to give us a different opportunity rather than using, just using fund balance to pay for that. If we finance the carousel building and the carousel, it will be paid over fifteen to twenty years and thus it'll be paid by the citizens who will be using that building over those years. And again, it will keep us from using fund balance. We spoke with our financial advisors to see what the opportunities might be. We spoke with Davenport and they are a top notch firm and they have given us good advice over the past years. The interest rates, as Dr. Walden alluded to, are very favorable for loans at this time. Davenport has told us that for their recent bids and other projects that they've worked on with other local governments, that fifteen year bids, they've gotten a range of one and a half to two and a half percent interest rate. And for twenty year bids, they've gotten an interest rate bids range of two and a half to three percent. When the city borrows for a period longer than five years, we have to have LGC approval and there are certain steps that we need to follow. And one of them, those steps is sending a letter to the state legislature alerting them of our intent to borrow monies. They passed, the state legislature passed this law back in, during the oh eight, oh nine Great Recession and therefore if council is interested in us pursuing this option, we should send that letter to the legislature this week. So tonight we're just asking if this is something for our general consensus from council to see if this is something you want us to continue proceeding with, the steps on financing of the carousel building. Likewise, when we go out to do financing, there's due to the steps and some of costs that you incur anyway, we like to look at things that we really need to do, but haven't and have to do and will have to do that we've just been kind of kicking the can down the road and in order to hopefully be able to do those items sooner. We've included a couple of those items and we will go into great detail in this at our work session in July. But before we go any further, we want to see if this was something that council was interested in us doing so that we can kind of get the process started. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I'll tell you, great job with that summary, captured all the details. One thing I'll just mention, I think we're pinched on the backside of this is that we need to have the financing worked out so the carousel house construction can begin once the bids are received. And that's all trying to make sure the carousel house is ready once the animals are back. So that's where we get sort of pinched into this timetable.
Any questions from council regarding this?
Feel the plan would be to, to go into this pretty in depth, the work session.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. We need to be looking at all the comprehensive fixed budgetary items that we've got ahead of us and, and lump them all together as much. We've done a great job right here. But if there's any even more with rates being where they're at, and certainly it solves two purposes.
Other council questions or do we have general consensus for staff to proceed on this?
Just want to ask about taking it to the legislature. Do we have to name a number or just that we are considering finite making?
We, we do have to name a number, but my understanding is that even though they've asked for this letter, not much really happens with it. It's just a kind of an FYI, this is what we're thinking about doing. If for some reason at the work session, we decide that we do not, the council does not want to proceed any further, there's no harm, there's no harm done. We can stop.
Thank you.
Everything just has to be solid when you go to the local government commission for their approval. That's, that's, that's when everything is must be submitted and has to be in place and in terms of the, their approval for the borrowing.
Yes, sir. That's right.
Any other questions? Any objections to proceeding with this? All right, hearing objections, we'll look forward to a work session presentation on this topic. If council members do think of any other projects that they'd like included in this discussion, please forward those on to Peggy and Harden prior to the work session.
Thank you.
Peggy, let me ask you a question if I could, Mayor. Is there a, in, in the process that you've talked to Davenport about, is there a, a cap in terms of money, in terms of the borrowing capacity during this procedure?
There is, as far as what is called bank qualified, there's a ten million dollar cap. If you go above the ten million dollar cap, then it's no longer bank qualified.
And that means exactly what?
It just can't affect your interest rates some. I don't know. That's something that the federal government has in their laws. But I'll explain more about it at the work session.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is, is it Peggy, I think is it more, it's more, certainly more complicated if you go over ten million? And does that then kick you into more of investment companies as your lenders versus banks as your lenders?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So this is council comment period. Do I hear any council comments?
Mayor, I've got one comment that I want to just briefly touch on. Over the last few weeks and even tonight, we've heard a lot throughout the country and the public surrounding policing and, and police departments and, and you know, just lots of, lots of conversation and, and a lot of action. And I've heard words, we've all heard words like defund, we've heard words word like abolish, I've heard reform. We've all witnessed through media many officers treated in a manner that concerns me deeply. I would not have thought I would see such to our police in a long, in, in my lifetime. While while we've got so much going on across the country, I, I totally try to get a knowledge of it and understanding of it, but our primary concern is Burlington and what we do. And I just want to go on record and state how proud I am of our police department and a lot of the initiatives that, that they're involved in. Can we improve? Absolutely, absolutely. And I believe Chief Smythe would be the first person and his leadership team to tell you that we can improve and that we will continue to improve. But I don't want us to lose sight of the progress that we have made and the many initiatives that were taken over the last few years to see that our men and women police in a just fair and respectable manner and you know, it's, it, there's a lot of good, there's a lot of good policing that I see on a day in and day out basis. If we're not careful, we're gonna lose our best performing officers because of the worst actions by a select few. And we need to stand behind those doing it right. And I think largely in the city of Burlington, we do it right. You know, in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, somewhere near, I sat down with Chief Smythe and, and said, chief, let's look at your budget. What are some of the things that concern you? What are some of the things that you're, you're looking at that you need? And one of the first things he said is training. At the time, and I'm going from memory a little bit, but it was like an eight or nine thousand dollar a year training budget. I think we're north of a hundred thousand now on a consistent basis annually, a hundred and ten thousand in our training budget, which is phenomenal. You know, I think we all need to get educated, even, I have to refresh my memory on Kalia certified, what that means. I've been to a couple of the ceremonies and the, the over the past years. You know, I recall there was a, there was a book that the police department put out in two thousand eighteen, kind of just a summary of some of their initiatives and whatnot. One of the things that I read in it that just struck a chord with me is they had a one man pledge kicked off in two thousand seventeen to create successful outcomes for interactions between law enforcement and persons affected by mental illness. We were the thirteenth agency out of eighteen thousand in the nation, I think, that, that accomplished this task. So I'm proud of our police department. I'm proud of their accomplishments. I'm proud of their guidance, their governance, what they try to do, their community involvement. I stand behind them as they continue to evolve and improve. And I just want them to know that. Are, are we perfect? No, absolutely not. And do we need public input to continue to get better? Yes, without a doubt. Dialogue and collaboration is critical. Are we going to continue to work on our shortcomings? Yes. But defunding our police department is absolutely not an option. We've got to be sure that we're doing everything possible to get everyone trained and give them the tools that they need so that they continue to, to move forward in a positive and proactive manner. My support is a requirement. It's, it's something that I feel obligated to do. I, I would request the same from our community that we support our law enforcement officers and stand behind them and work with them on some of these things that we're trying to accomplish together. I just want to personally say thank you to them, to all of our law enforcement officers, every one of them. I love you guys. I support you. I pray for you every day. And I pray for your safety. So continue to do the job that you do and Chief Smythe, proud of you and your leadership team. And I just want to go on record to say how important those individuals are to me.
Mayor, if I could add something there, I agree with Jim, with Jim on many of the things he said. The one issue that has changed policing, at least it, it might tend you as much as anything was when the state of North Carolina basically cut significant funding for mental health issues.
Yes.
And what we, and if you go back and pull up minutes of various meetings, I remember and, and, and then Councilman Huffman, I think, and, and then Attorney Ward can certainly, I think, remember this is that we were basically tagging young officers and putting them in a position of dealing with people with really some substantial mental health issues. And without a lot of training at that time, and it's taken a long time to get training, but quite frankly, you know, what, what I, I hear some, some issues that, that across the country, but my point though is every state is different in terms of how various functions are divided. Mental health is, is certainly one that primarily comes from the county level of government in North Carolina. If, and, and certainly this would take a substantial amount of time, but if, if, if all these discussions could, could, could look at how we could jointly work together in, in reference with our police and our mental health professionals. And I know we've made strides in that area. It would, it, it would certainly be advantageous to our, all of our citizens in our community. It's a, it's a very, it's a challenging situation. And it's, it's no matter how much we try to train our officers, it's a, it's something that, that that's not their, their total profession at times. But they got to have some backup with mental health expertise. And I, I would certainly, you know, this might be out, out of the left field, but I, I would think at some point in time, cities and counties need to sit down and begin to think about this in reference to how this process could go forward in a, in a systematic manner that would be for the betterment of all of our citizens.
Well, I, I would certainly agree with everything that both council members have said. Support our police and the kinds of strategies that they've used over the last several years to improve their department have been quite amazing. And their, what they have to go through in order to be recognized by Kalia and other organizations is, it's immense and they have lived up to what their own mission is to become an excellent police department or the excellent, I think, is, is the chief's goal. And I support all of that. And I'd ask, like to add though, that there are also, I think it's important for us to recognize the, that, that what we're hearing about is systemic racism, which is something that we have not broached. I think it's something that our consciences have been pricked and what we've seen tells us that we have a long way to go to seeing all people as all people as important, but Black Lives Mattering. And I think that there are some things that certainly that Chief has talked about that could be improved in that area. But I don't think it should be limited to that, to the police. It has to be that we look at ourselves in City Hall, we look at ourselves throughout our departments and see if that is not something that we need to come up with some good goals to improve. I think we have to examine our own consciences, first of all, and do some of the understanding and learning that this is calling us to do today. And I'd like to encourage the council to support something that comes up with those kinds of goals aspirationally.
Thank you for those comments. Any additional council comments? All right, at this time, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor of motion to adjourn, please say aye and indicate with a hand raised.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you, everyone, for attending this evening, and we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. Meeting is adjourned.
Good to see you, everybody. Good night, good night, everyone.
Aye.